Meeting called to order.
Meeting's called to order, sorry. I was wondering if no one was responding and then the microphone was off. So I'd like to formally call to order the October 17, 2023 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Mr. Clerk, if you kindly call the roll.
Yes. Andres Padadello.
Here.
Deborah Ray.
Here.
Peter Pivko.
Here.
Steve Mayans.
Present.
Will Carentes.
Present.
Patrick Mayfield. Jean Marset.
Present.
So all but Patrick are present. All right, next order of business is approval of the September 19, 2023 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Good evening, Angela Van Panen Zoning Administrator. Quickly go over the one case that was approved by the City Commission since your last Planning Board meeting was temporary resoning. You heard this back on July 18th. It was resoning from Seemut Core Two. One site that's at the south, southern boundary of Seemut and resoning to Seemut Core One. And Commission approved this on second reading on October 2nd by five to zero vote. That concludes all the cases that was heard by City Commission since your last meeting. Staff needs to make a correction to the agenda. Planning Board Case Number 973 and 973A. Staff is requesting a 30-day continuance.
Is this the code revision cases, Angela?
No, this is the number three.
Okay, hold on one second.
Planning Board Cases Numbers 973 and 973A.
One moment.
Staff is requesting a 30-day continuance until the November 21st meeting, and that one would need to be motioned and continued. And staff is also requesting continuance of CRC Case Number 2306. That one doesn't necessarily need to be motioned and continued, but number three needs to be motioned and continued until the November 21st meeting.
Okay, so forgive me. Let's first start with Planning Board Cases Number 1973 and 1973A. Do we have a motion to continue it for the next Planning Board meeting?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Angela, I know the two code revision cases.
CRC number, it wasn't on mailers. I mean, you can continue, but it's no mailers or anything, no advertising associated with that one. Staff just got to remove it from the agenda.
So we don't need to make a vote?
You don't need official vote, no.
Okay, those are removed from agenda. Anything else you need us for on the agenda?
Say it again?
Anything else for the agenda?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions of staff? All right. Next on the agenda are remarks of the chairperson, of which I have none, then comes a declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin, can I find this form? By saying that to all matters this evening, I have had no ex parte communications, I have received no written communications, I have conducted no investigations, I made no site visits, I have received no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Let me start with you, Anjay.
Yes, as to a matter of the cases presented this evening, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not had any received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation or made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to the matter for cases presented tonight, on tonight's agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that this, these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all matters, in the agenda this evening, I have not had any ex parte communications, nor have I not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, nor made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to the matters before the Planning Board this evening, I have not had any ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Jean.
As to all items on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. That brings us then to the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That brings us then to Planning Board Case 1961.
Please state your name for the record. My name is Patricia Monahan. I'm with Marine Construction, and we're trying to get a Class A special permit for a dock that would be proposed at 104.1 inch from the mean high water line. At this point, we're only allowed 40 feet off the shoreline, and basically that mooring area would be way too shallow to put a boat in there without doing a lot of dredging. And consequently, the dredging could definitely jeopardize the shoreline stabilization. So we're really hoping that this will get approved. I know the existing neighboring docks have all bigger docks.
Yeah, too bad you weren't here last month. We had a special on docks. You were not discounted.
I think we had four cases on docks last month.
Did you have a discount on your permit fees?
In fact, Peter wore a captain's hat, as I recall. All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? If not, let's hear from staff.
All right, good day, everyone. Jermaine Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner.
Excuse me, do you mind speaking a little more directly in the microphone? We're having trouble hearing you.
No problem. So Jermaine Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner, I'll be presenting ZBA Case Number This is a request for a dock for the subject property, which is located at 7405 South Flagler Drive, and the property is sold single-family, low-density. It is 0.4 acres in size. The length of the proposed dock is 104 feet, 1 inch in length. The existing docks, there are also existing docks to the north and south of the subject So the existing dock to the mid-south of the subject property is 94 feet in length, and the dock to the north is 4 inches longer at 104 feet, 5 inches. All right, so we have the video here. So you're looking at the building, which is on the property, and as you see, it's non-contiguous riparian rights. They have Flagler, which runs through, and you have, you know, the shoreline here, which is a buildup of sand, which justifies the intent to extend past the 100 feet. All right, the waiver requests an additional 4 feet and 1 inch in length, as mentioned, which exceeds the 100 feet permitted in Code Section 94-313A3I. With staff approval, with approval of the waiver, the request will comply with requirements for additional standards and length for the dock. It is staff's professional opinion that the waiver request for the additional 4 feet and 1 inches in length is necessary to avoid the constant dredging needed. Staff finds that the proposed dock and waiver requests meet the standards found in Section 94-36E34 and 5, Sections 94-313A34, and Sections 94-273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. Staff therefore recommends approval with the condition that advertising signage is prohibited on the dock. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. Jean?
No questions.
Any questions here? I just had a couple real quick ones. It looks like it's still within the middle third of the lot, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's almost identical to the docks on both sides. Has there been any objection of any of the neighbors that we know of?
Just one neighbor who wanted to see if it is that he could do the same thing that they're doing for this.
I'm so sorry.
There was one neighbor.
Right.
Wanted to see if they could do a dock similar.
Oh, I see. So they liked the idea and wanted it for their own property.
Pretty much.
Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? Please come forward, state your name.
Must be the neighbor.
You're the neighbor. No.
Just wondering, this may have been said.
Please state your name first for the record, thank you.
Ethan Root, just wondering if this may have been said, but does the property have riparian rights?
I'm going to look to our attorney, but we are to assume when the application comes that's been reviewed by legal and they have riparian rights. But Sam, can you address that?
Yes, sir, and staff has determined that it has non-contiguous riparian rights.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else from the public wish to be heard? And if not, we'll bring them back to the board. Anyone have any concerns or objections to the request? And if not, look for a motion for approval.
Do the motion. All right, but we have conditions, right?
One condition about the advertising, as I recall.
All right. I move the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval of Planning Board Case 1961, a request by Patricia Monahan on behalf of Mary Cheatham for a Class A special use permit with waivers for a private dock that exceeds the length of 100 feet maximum of the subject located at 7405 South Flagler Drive. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the time of the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards of Section 94-36E and 3 through 5, Section 94-313A3 and 4, and Section 94-273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated October 17, 2023. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure the compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll call Planning Board Case Number 791MM. If we may hear from the applicant.
Cameron Ennis, with Schmidt Nichols for the record. All right, so we're here to talk about a wonderful high-end office redevelopment opportunity for Center Park tonight, and with that, we'll get right into it. So first, we're going to go over some of the contacts, the location of the site, the future land use and zoning designations. We'll go over our requests, the site and landscape plans, we'll take a look at the architecture, and finally, we'll finish out with the waivers that we're requesting tonight. So the site's located in the Center Park DRI. It's on the east side of Australian Avenue, just north of Center Park Boulevard. And you can see the site is 1.27 acres, and it's of a peninsula configuration. It's surrounded on three sides by Canal Rights Way, and it fronts on Australian Avenue to the north. Currently has a one-story office building on it. So here you can see the future land use designation. It's currently commercial DRI, and similar with zoning, we have a commercial planned development zoning designation. So looking at the existing site, it's currently a one-story office with just under 12,000 square feet of space. We believe this is relatively underutilized, given the location of the site and its proximity to downtown, and given the context of what's occurring in Center Park today. And here's our request tonight. So we're requesting a major planned development amendment to redevelop the site with a 13-story, 155,000-square-foot office building. And we have three waivers before you tonight for front and side setbacks, which are a result of the shape and location of the site, which we'll get into. So looking at the site plan here, you can see we are located, the relatively triangular shape of the site, it's located with three, surrounded on three sides by Canal Rights Way, and it also fronts on Australian Avenue. So it's pretty much surrounded by Rights Way. Here you can see the footprint of the building. It's 155,765 square feet, over 13 stories. A portion of that height is parking, of which we have 446 parking spaces. We meet the maximum allowed building coverage of 60%, and we're providing 17% more landscape area than is required. Here we can take a look at the landscape plan. So again, we're providing 17% more landscape area than is required minimum. We're also saving 35 of the 48 existing canopy trees on this site. And here you can see a few photos of those at the bottom there. Here we can take a look at the architecture. This doesn't do justice to those trees that we're saving. They are relatively large oak trees, but you can just take a look at this and see conceptually what the architecture is going to look like. So this is looking at it from the south, as if you'd be approaching from Center Park Drive North. This is looking at it from across one of those Canal Rights Way to the west. And this is what it looks like from Australian Avenue. So just to give some context to our request tonight, I just want to reintroduce the Center Park DRI, in case you're unfamiliar. So the Center Park DRI was originally approved in 1985, and what it did is it vested concurrency for specific land uses. And so here we can see what some of those land uses are. It was 572,000 square feet of office space, of which 330,000 square feet has been built, which you can see in blue here. 382 hotel rooms, of which 235 have been built. 570 dwelling units, of which 477 have either been built or approved. And finally, 20,000 square feet of commercial, of which none has been built. So what that leaves is quite a bit of development potential that has not been built out, built out. However, most of the land area has been utilized in the Center Park DRI. And so what that leaves is a question of where to put the rest of that development potential. So you can see here, we have 241,653 square feet of office space available to build in the DRI. However, we only have three real potential redevelopment sites. There's one small vacant lot towards the south, and then there are two properties with one-story office buildings, of which ours is one of those at the northern end. So going into our waivers, again, our site is of an odd shape. It's relatively triangular, and it is also a peninsula. It's surrounded on three sides by Canal Rights Way, which are 100 feet wide, and it's also fronting on Australian Avenue, which is 110 foot wide right of way. So the city requires a front setback of 20 feet, plus an additional 6 feet for every 10 feet in building height above 60 feet. The side setback is similar, 15 feet, plus 6 additional for every 10 feet in height above 60. So with our 13-story building, what that ends up meaning is we need a 92-foot front setback and 87-foot side setbacks. We're proposing, as you can see on the site plan here, a 13-foot front setback to Australian, a 5-foot west side setback, and a 16-foot east side setback, and you can see our waivers requested there. Now, we understand those requests sound relatively large, but ultimately, those are not the true setbacks. Those are only the code setbacks. So like I said, we are peninsula here, and our true setbacks to our nearest developable property, our nearest neighbor, is more than 100 feet. So you can see these dimensions here. These are dimensions to our nearest neighbors on all sides. In addition to that, you can see our setbacks to the nearest building, existing buildings to the east, are more than 250 feet away. In addition to that, our building has been designed with our height in mind. So we've designed the building with an 88-foot tall podium, which reaches at the furthest point towards Australia. However, the tower portion of the site, which reaches 175 feet tall, is actually centered more towards the south of the site to keep some of that mass away from the public rights And here we can see that on a profile view. So Australian Avenue would be to the left here. Here you can see the 88-foot tall podium and the tower, which rises above it to 175 So finally, want to close out with some consistency with our requests here. So the Center Park DRI was originally approved as a suburban development. There wasn't a whole lot going on between I-95 and Australian Avenue back in the 80s. It was imagined to have offices and hotels surrounded by parking, surface parking. However, today, Center Park is very close to downtown, which has a lot of development activity going on. So as a result, the city has promoted a more urban development pattern. And what that means is they'd like to activate frontages, hide the parking, and the building should address the street. And we think our site design does all those things. Going off of that, there's been two other applications that have had waivers approved as a result, which were a result of that urban development pattern that the city's looking for. So 1500 Center Park Boulevard had four waivers approved for a seven-story residential project, and 1885 had five waivers approved for an eight-story residential project. And finally, there is another office tower in the DRI at 1400 Center Park Boulevard. It's 10 stories tall. It was built in 1988. It has a front setback of 45 feet and a side setback of 35 feet. Today, this building would require a 60-foot front setback and a 55-foot side setback. And with that, I'll close out. We appreciate your consideration of approval for our major planned development amendment and our waivers. We're in agreement with staff's six conditions. We have approval from the Center Park Property Owners Association for this project. We request our testimony tonight be entered into the record, and our team's here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's start on this side. Any questions of the applicant? Anjay, I'll start with you.
I have no questions.
Deborah?
I have no questions.
Peter?
Considering that you're virtually surrounded by water, and you're telling me what considerations you've made regarding 100-year flood?
That's a great question. So the building will be built to the finished floor elevation. I think South Florida Water Management sets that. It's 2 feet above the flood elevation.
5 feet above, okay.
Will, any questions? Jean, any questions?
No questions.
I just had a couple of thoughts. First, I think it was a very good presentation. Let me commend you on that. The two things I find persuasive about this so far is the fact that it's surrounded by the water, so it's not a traditional setback. And I think the point was very well taken about the shift from the urban versus the suburban thing. Thank you. Would staff wish to be heard? Come forward, please.
Good evening, Planning Board members. For the record, my name is Kevi DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department, and I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendations on the subject agenda item, which involves the planned development major amendment with waivers to allow for the development project proposal known as the contemporary, which the applicant thoroughly explained. So I will not go into further detail of the request, but for the waiver request, staff does not object to these specific requests. And staff finds that the request complies with the amendment standards found in Section 94-32A of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations. And staff also finds that the request complies with the site design qualitative development standards found in Section 94-35C of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations. And based on the information provided by the applicant, the evidence gathered and reviewed by staff, staff recommends an approval with conditions of PB Case Number 791MM. And here are staff's recommended conditions of approval.
Is this to be heard on this one?
And I would like to highlight condition number one, which staff will take responsibility of carrying out, come City Commission public hearing. And this is basically to accurately reflect the remaining development entitlements within the overall Center Park DRI CPD. And I've printed out copies of the tables for you guys to review.
What happened? Sam knows that by heart?
Thank you. You skipped Sam, eh? Oh, Sam. Sam doesn't care about this.
And I've highlighted the data and information that will need to be updated come City Commission. And this concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions of staff?
Are we making this part of the motion, or it's already, because this is not a new report, right?
Right. That specific tables, no, that's not a part of.
Should be included, or just for information?
It's just for information.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring them back to the board. Anyone have any objections, concerns, misgivings, support? What are your thoughts?
I mean, it seems pretty, because it's a peninsula and surrounded by water on three sides, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer.
It's almost like a dock extension from last month.
Yeah, exactly. It's a reverse dock extension.
It would be very different if it landed right there, but it has a natural barrier.
And it's been an office building for, it's already been an existing office building for years and years and years, so it's not a change of use. It's just going higher, and you have the hotel behind it in terms of height, so it's not going to look out of place on that roadway, especially with the other apartment buildings and things that have been built there, so.
Jean, any thoughts?
Initially, my only concern was the frontage setback along Australian, but there's a precedent set there with a neighboring building, so I don't have any objections.
Okay. Any other thoughts? If not, look for a motion for approval. Make sure you include the conditions, whoever does it.
I'll move that the Planning Board, again, to the City Commission, approval of Planning Board Case Number 791MM. Requested by John Schmidt Nichols on behalf of Center Park Master Mine LLC for a major amendment to the Center Park Commercial Plan Development with waivers from the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations to allow for the construction of a 13-story, 155,765-square-foot office building on the subject property located at 1545 Center Park Drive North. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the applicant's statements. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the applicant's submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes finding of fact that the application complies with the required standards of sections ninety-four dash thirty-two A, ninety-four dash thirty-five C of the City West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning land development regulations in consistency with the comprehensive plan of City of West Palm Beach.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye or aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Are we on our last case now? Because, yeah, that's good. Nineteen seventy-three and seventy-three A have been moved, so it's planning board case nine five zero, followed by six L's. And this, maybe hear from the applicant. I thought this could be a late night, but three of them got knocked down. And we haven't met a dock we didn't like.
Good evening, planning board. Tyler Woolsey with Urban Design Studio on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, here to present a minor adjustment to the master sign plan for the square, otherwise known as Rosemary Square or City Place.
To be clear, the square is the official name now, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So tonight, I'll be presenting to you briefly some changes to the master sign plan, what's called Exhibit B, as well as Exhibit C, which is the tenant sign criteria. Just for a brief history, the master sign plan originally was approved in May two thousand. It's a condition of approval for the, what was then the City Place DRI, to have a master sign plan to govern tenant signage throughout the development. The changes that we've worked with on staff recently include modifications to definitions for awning requirements, canopies, including a new definition for trellis relating that to canopy, and definition of requirements for pergola. The purpose of these changes is to introduce minor requirements for each of these, as each of these structures are slightly different, and so the specific signage and mounting options for these structures vary slightly. So in order to account for that, we've made minor changes and added definitions. We've also modified the sign type classifications to better accommodate and group these signs together, specifically sign type one being primary wall signs. We've clarified that that does include fascia, arcade, canopy, pergola, and awning signs, as well as updating the definitions and specific requirements for canopy and pergola signage. As mentioned, we've also worked with staff on new mounting options, including specifications for backplates and panels being permitted for specific sign types, namely canopy and pergola signs, as well as arcade identity signs, a couple examples of which you see here on the screen. We've worked also to provide for temporary construction signage on construction fencing, consistent with the city's current regulations and the ZLDRs, as well as allowing for that temporary construction signage, which is currently only permitted against right-of-way, to be permitted against the FEC railroad. And finally, we've worked to define and specify requirements to allow vertical building signage, like you see here in these images, for storefront type ones, which is essentially a ground floor, single-story tenant with an arcade. Working with staff, we've complied with all of the criteria for a minor adjustment, and staff is in support of our request. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? I'll start with you, Peter.
Who's the designer that you use for the signage?
Kenny Rasko at Pennamaro.
Well, it's good to give him some credit somewhere.
Good point. Thank you. We'll make sure to do that.
Okay. Deborah, any questions? Andre?
No questions.
Any questions on this side? Okay, thank you. Maybe hear from staff.
Thank you.
I'm not Eric, but Angela Van Penning is on an administrator. Hey, the applicant has done an adequate job of...
Adequate? Ouch.
Making the presentation about the amendment to the City Place or Rosemary Square master sign plan. I'm not going to go back over what he talked about, but again, this is the Eighth Amendment of the plan. Hopefully, we get to catch everything this time. And he talked about it basically clarifies awning and canopy definitions. As a pergola definition, clarifies sign mounting, the canopies and pergolas, and clarifies backplate paneling for arcades and identity signs and so forth. Most of it's just clarification. We've had issues when companies come in, of course, they got their own design and the way they want to do their signs, so we're trying to adapt the regulations for that. And staff recommends approval based on the finding that the petition meets all the amendment standards finding section ninety-four thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations. Any questions?
Any questions of staff?
There is no text of a motion in the report.
Did he?
There's no text of motion on the report.
Oh, he didn't put it in there?
Yeah.
Are we going it right, Sam?
It's just recommend approval.
Yeah.
Uh, he didn't put it in there? Let me see.
Well, are we still unfinished with the public to be heard, et cetera, before we make any motions? But first, any questions of staff?
I do have a question.
Angela?
Go ahead, read it, we'll approve it.
Center Park would be a similar, Center Park.
Huh?
It's just have to change the motions of mine. Center Park is the same. It's a major amendment to a planned development.
Okay, so he's saying the one for Center Park, have you seen the thing? Just change the name, you'll be fine.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Gene has a question for you?
Sure. Are there any current tenants that would be adversely affected, and is there a grandfather provision?
Thank you for the question. None of the current tenants would be affected. We've actually been working with staff on new tenants that are coming in. That's why we've modified some of these regulations to allow for new tenants that are permitting signs currently. No existing tenants would be affected, and no currently permitted signs are being prohibited by modifications. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? All right, we'll bring him back to the board. Any concerns or issues by any board members? I mean, I think they do a beautiful job at the square, you know. Their track record's pretty good. Other than the big sign that Eric had tried to dissuade us from, but other than that, it's been pretty clean. So if not, if there's no objections, I'll be looking for a motion. I think you're working on it. Is that right, Peter? To follow the form?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, just have to find it. Hang on. I'm coming, I'm coming. I had it, second of all.
That's right. If anyone has the motion from the Center Park one, we just need to substitute. Do you have it right there, Deborah?
Go ahead. Just change the case number.
Change the case number or the name?
Twenty-three oh four.
We don't want to prove them twice. Did you find it? Will, it looks like you're looking at it. Now, did you know who found the motion as well?
You gonna make it?
Yep.
Okay, oh, I think Gene's gonna make the motion for us.
James? They're on the...
We stop a lot of people here. There's nothing after this, is there?
No.
Why are there so many people?
This is, no, there's nothing else.
I know, but look at the people in the back corner there. I think they're here for something.
I don't know.
We'll find out when we say.
Maybe they didn't know this was taken off the agenda.
They'll figure it out?
Yeah. Yeah.
Found it? Okay, go ahead, Deborah. Yeah, substituting the name and the number. Other than that, it should be the same.
Yeah.
You got it.
Turn your mic on.
We'll go all out.
I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval of planning board case twenty-three oh four.
No, no, my friend, it's nine five zero.
I'm sorry.
Six L's. Isn't that the one?
Nine five zero.
I'm sorry, then I'm the one confused.
I thought it was twenty-three oh four.
That's a code revision case. We've been here on, we're on ninety...
Nine five zero L L L.
Six L's.
Wow.
My apologies.
No problem. Just say whatever the case is. No, 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 come on. We're gonna be precise.
I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval of planning board case number nine five zero L L L L. A request on behalf of Center Park Master Plan LLC for a major amendment to the Center Park Commercial Plan Development.
No, no, no.
But we can't read the same thing.
It would be on behalf of Urban Design Stud, on behalf of City Place Retail LLC.
City Place.
City Place Retail LLC.
So how do we get, how do we get the true reading for this?
We have it down here if you want. Okay, if you want, maybe they'll take a hand. They've written it out now.
Okay.
So we'll give you a, do you have it down amended motion?
Can you take a stab at it?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
All right. I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval, is my mic on? Of planning board case nine fifty L L L L. A request by Michelle Querter of Urban Design Studios on behalf of City Place Retail LLC for the approval of a major plan development amendment to update portions of the Rosemary Square City Place CPD master sign plan. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards of sections ninety-four dash thirty-two A and ninety-four dash thirty-five C the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations.
Okay, Deborah, are we gonna second that or?
I guess so.
Okay, okay. An enthusiastic second. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye or aye. Any opposed, it passes unanimously. I see a lot of people still here, but I believe, am I mistaken? Are we done with our agenda now? We got one thing more, because I was told the two code revision cases are not going forward?
This must be the twenty-three oh...
Code revision case twenty-three oh four.
Twenty-three oh four. I thought...
Twenty-three oh six was the item that was continued.
Didn't get an email from...
I don't think it included this.
All right, then, is that the one that you have the issue with? Okay. Thank you. Before we get started, I think we'll have something.
I do need to amend my ex parte declaration. I did have ex parte communications with the applicant. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Is that good, Sam? You have a look like there's...
Yes, my decision this evening will be based solely on the evidence presented at this meeting.
And I was so hopeful we're done for this evening. Please come forward. We're calling code revision case twenty-three zero four. Damn, I thought we were done. I thought, I thought.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is, move this up. My name is Joseph First, founder, managing principal of Place Projects, offices at eleven oh five North Dixie Highway. I will be very brief with our presentation, because the city's candidly much better than ours. So just by way of refresher, I'm one of the lead developers and partners in the Nora District. That is the area just north of Quadville, south of Palm Beach Lakes, and east of the railroad tracks. Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me one second. I did have a conversation on the phone regarding this case, but I have not received written communications or conducted investigation. My decisions will be based on the information presented tonight.
See, you're driving a lot of memories here.
Here we go. So as you may recall, we went through a major master plan instead of new zoning regulations for the district. There's a couple of things that we forgot to tweak and a couple of issues that we ran into in design, so that's why we're here tonight. If you've been by the district, we are well under construction. All of the infrastructure and streetscape work is underway. All the buildings have been through their interior demolition, and we are effectively, will be left with nine adaptively reused buildings and four new construction buildings comprising about one hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of commercial space along North Railroad Avenue. As we, of course, started working on our vertical development, our first vertical development project is a two-hundred-plus key hotel with BD Hotels out of New York. It's also on North Railroad Avenue. And as we were designing that hotel, again, we ran into a few issues. The first two are specific to Nora, the first of which is related to the setbacks. So when the original setbacks were made in the development tables affecting the west side and the east side of North Railroad Avenue, those setbacks were based on the existing road, which had less than a five-foot sidewalk and a very sort of tired right-of-way. As part of our streetscape plan, we've expanded that to fourteen-foot sidewalks, both on the east and the west side, a curbless street. And as a result, the measurements of setbacks needed to change. So that's basically a Scrivener's error, which the city will present in more detail. The second of which is related to signage, another peculiarity. So the west side of North Railroad Avenue is in Nora five. That's a general commercial district that has the same signage regulations throughout the DMP. The east side of the road is in BPDR, which is a residential district that does allow commercial uses along North Railroad Avenue. When we started designing our signage, we realized that there were two different signage standards for the east and the west side of the road. So of course, this is just to allow the east side of the road, commercial properties, to have the same signage treatment as the west side of the road. The two code changes that affect the entire DMP did come through our design of the hotel and challenges that we ran into. We brought those challenges to city staff. City staff had seen those challenges many times before and thought that they were good changes to make for the entire DMP. The first of which has to do with covered structures on the roof. You currently are allowed to have thirty percent of your roof area with covered structures. This amendment allows that to increase to thirty-five percent. But more importantly, it allows the covered structures to also be enclosed, which do count towards FAR, and it allows you to have uses that are accessory uses to the underlying use of the building. So for this hotel, there will be an activated rooftop with food and beverage operation on the roof. This just allows that to take place without needing to count that as an additional story, though of course, all of the enclosed spaces do count towards FAR, as I mentioned earlier. The second issue is related to candidly parking and mezzanines. So as you know, many projects within the DMP put a mezzanine level for parking between the first and second floor effectively, in the first twenty-five feet of the project. Typically, there's a liner use requirement and a rule that the mezzanine can only be fifty percent of the floor area. In an attempt for us to fit all of the required parking on site, we needed to exceed the fifty percent. And so we came up with code, of course, that the city is supporting and helped draft to allow a parking non-habitable space to exist within the first twenty-five feet, really between the fifteen-foot and twenty-five-foot mark of the building, to be placed within the building, not count as a story. The condition, of course, is that the architectural treatment of the facade completely covers up that parking, so nobody from the street would have any idea there's parking there. And there's actually some good precedent examples that the city will show momentarily. So thank you very much. That's the portion of my presentation. Turning it over to Chris.
For the record, Chris Kimmerly, Urban Design Planner. This is for code revision case twenty-three oh four. As you just heard from the applicant, it is a revision to some of our definitions downtown, as well as district-specific code revisions to the North Railroad Avenue District. Starting with the first one here, I just want to give a little bit more context and detail into the code revisions themselves. This is the change to our definition of covered structures. And as Joe had said, it is to allow basically accessory enclosed spaces under our covered structures definition. We do increase the maximum gross area from thirty percent to five, or thirty-five percent. This five percent increase, again, just allows a little bit more flexibility on our rooftop spaces in terms of programming, and it is not an excessive increase, but we recognize that this allows a little bit more for enclosed spaces in relation to rooftop gardens and pool cabanas and things like that. We want to clarify that these covered structures, if they are enclosed, will count toward FAR and we have a limitation in that only thirty percent of a primary elevation or frontage can contain a covered structure and if they exceed that amount, it would have to step back an additional ten feet. So what that looks like, again, this is a very conceptual rendering, not the scale here, but on the left there, you will see that a building's elevation, primary elevation on the frontage, that area highlighted in the red there is that thirty percent. We wanted to impose this in the sense that we feel that neighboring properties in the street condition, we don't want it to be perceived as an extra story. So we really wanted to limit the amount of covered space that is presented on this rooftop without encroaching into the realm of being an additional story. The image on the right here shows that, again, conceptually, thirty-five percent of this rooftop could be occupied, that is in that dotted square there. And in this example, they're only utilizing that first thirty percent and if they wanted to maximize that thirty-five percent, which is in this crosshatch area, it would have to step back behind that ten feet. Again, this is just to push the massing further interior to the site and give that perception to the neighboring properties in the streetscape that it's not an additional story. The second code revision touches on our definition of story itself. Again, this is to allow for a interstitial parking level, unlined, non-active between the first and second floors and fifteen and twenty-five feet of the podium specifically. Within that, we do have some criteria that would have to be met within the site. The first is that ninety percent of the floor must be parking use or uninhabitable use exclusively. The second is that there's a full integration of the architecture. We do not want applied treatments, no more mesh screening, things like that, green walls. We really want this to be integrated within the architecture of the building so it reads as one continuous double-height podium. The project cannot exceed seventy percent of its max required parking. Again, we always encourage the most minimal parking possible within downtown in these projects, so if you are going above the minimum, we don't want you to excessively park your project. So this is just a limitation to kind of keep that level lower. All other levels meet active use requirements, so the first and second and third stories would have to meet their variance, or meet their active use liners and requirements without a variance request. We do not want to encourage a mezzanine within that parking level. This parking level acts as the mezzanine essentially and while the parking level will not count toward the height and story, so if you're doing a ten-story building and you have this interstitial parking level, it's not eleven stories, that height, it does still count toward your overall building height. So if you have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot maximum height and you have a ten-foot parking level, that ten feet does count for that one-twenty-five. Here are some visual examples of what we are looking at. So this is a conceptual rendering from the Nora Hotel project and that area highlighted in the red box there is this interstitial parking level and as you can see, it really is blended into that double-height podium context. You know, there would be a main lobby excessive with, an excessive height with, for the double, double height there and that's where that parking use is behind it. And then you can see here in the elevation of what that would look like. An example that we have downtown within the DRI is City Place Towers. So I've announced to a lot of people in the downtown, the first two or three levels of City Place Towers are parking. So what you see, that glass facade is actually a parking use hiding behind that. So this is what we want, this is the intention, is to allow this interstitial parking level, should it be integrated into a project like this where it's seamless and hidden. And then just touching on the last couple amendments, again, as Joe had mentioned, this is really just a cleanup when we did the Nora rezoning. We missed the signage provisions and this just gives the commercial properties the same signage regulations that we have throughout the rest of downtown. And then the setbacks, again, when we did the North Railroad Avenue streetscape project, you can see in this top image here, the formerly existing conditions, very narrow sidewalks. When we wrote the code, it was written to that streetscape and now we have a approved streetscape design with much wider sidewalks, so we wanted to revise the setbacks to accommodate that. Staff does recommend approval of code revision case twenty-three oh four based on the findings that it does meet all of our amendment standards. This was presented to the Downtown Action Committee last week on October eleventh and it did receive unanimous approval with a vote of for, nothing in favor and it is tentatively scheduled for city commission in November. There are any questions? That concludes my presentation.
So... The question I have is about the seventy percent of the, doesn't it seem, seventy percent of the maximum required parking. You had said something in your comments about the city is discouraging parking?
We always prefer that projects park to their minimum. We don't want to encourage additional height and stories with parking garages. So this is an attempt to really encourage the reduced parking, but if you are adding additional parking, you can hide it within this interstitial level between floors, but we don't want projects to approach their maximum parking ratios.
So where does the city expect people to park?
Within either the, in terms of the projects specifically, we, again, we ask that they meet within the minimum of that specific project, meeting the standards of that project. And then again, there are plenty of city parking garages within downtown. We, again, want to encourage a very walkable urban environment and again, with a lot of these projects, we encourage alternative transportation methods and TDM strategies to kind of reduce that parking demand.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with their particular project. I think that, you know, I like what they're doing with the second level, I like that they're, you know, adding more parking. I just kind of look at when you're building a new use in a part of the city that hadn't previously been developed to try and discourage parking, so...
And again, this is, I will say this is particular to a development that is trying to fit in or squeeze in another level of parking.
No, that's what I'm saying, I have no problem with what they're doing. I, I think that what they're doing with that second mezzanine level and exceeding what you guys require for the minimum is great. I'm a big parking hawk, you know, I have business in other parts of the city where parking is a very difficult issue. So when we're adding more capacity in the city, but we're discouraging parking, it's, you know, it's a little bit of a...
Understood.
I will say, when we got, years and years ago, when we had a, there was a big seminar in Coral Gables and they sent everyone, I was on the deck at the time, to hear the presenters under Elizabeth Peter Ziber, who was dean of the School of Architecture Miami and her husband Andre, I forget his name, but big on the new urbanism. And he gave the example Miami Beach and he said that it was really struggling, they'd come up with a new downtown master plan for them and the roads were narrowed and a lot of the parking was eliminated and they went from having no one there to now being so crowded. He goes, everyone complains about the parking and, and the traffic, but he goes, they're there, where they didn't before. So the balance they're talking about to make it a really great experience conflicts with the parking needs and it's how they're balancing it as best they can. But this is meeting the minimum parking requirements, right, this particular building?
Yes, this particular project would.
But I understand, I hear it all the time from friends.
It was just an opportunity for me to get on my soapbox about parking and, you know, let my voice be heard.
Keeps Uber in business. But you know, you can think about some of the best downtowns and they don't have enough parking and they don't have, they have traffic problems.
And again, other projects, I will say, can, again, park at their maximum ratios and exceed this level. The only requirement then is that they line their project with active uses, fronting that parking just to screen it and make it less, you know...
And I do like the changes that it has to be part of the architectural facade versus screened in so it really doesn't look like parking, which is great. So that's definitely the...
How does valet play into parking calculations? Because inevitably, you're gonna have valet at these hotels and restaurants. What, what happens, how does that get calculated into?
Yeah, so that is a separate assessment as part of our site plan approval process. So if you are looking to exercise a valet operation, again, is identifying where the pickup and drop-off is happening, if it's on the street or internally. We, again, prefer that this is internal to most sites as we don't want our rights-of-way utilized for these operations. But that is a separate assessment primarily conducted by our engineering, traffic engineering department just to configure whether or not it makes sense for those streetscapes, whether that the intersections and everything else function right with the increased mobility of trips and cars circulating.
But do those, do those valet spaces that they want or they contract for, are they taken away from the required parking spaces for...
It's an addition too, so they, they would still have to meet their minimum requirements for parking on a project. Valet is looking at, or valet is looked at as an additional amenity or product with the, the project proposed.
Okay.
So it does not substitute or mitigate necessarily their parking counts.
Understood, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, so what is, what's the significance of unlined parking? Does that mean there's no defined spots?
Unlined in terms of active use. So when we have in the downtown master plan, within your podium level, typically, we have an active use requirement. On the ground floor, it's, the standard for most districts is about sixty percent of your ground floor frontage has to be in active use and an active use is defined as something that is, a space that is habitable for human occupation and functions either as like a lobby, units, storefront, things like that. Depending on the district you are in within the downtown, we also have additional liner levels. So on the upper floors, two, three, I think it goes up to five on most of our podiums. Again, we ask that there is an active use liner, at least a depth of fifteen feet on that frontage has units, storefront, office space, something and that will allow parking behind it.
So unlined means no liner, not lines on the pavement?
Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
Just comment. I appreciate the city's flexibility in coming up with these suggestions that I think is going to generate some very interesting architectural design.
Okay. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard? And if not, let's bring them back to the board. Any concerns?
No, I mean, I don't have any concerns with it.
I, I will say one more thing, going back to your point, and I really have sympathy for your position, don't get me wrong, but when I moved downtown West Palm Beach over thirty years ago, you could drive through, you could, thirty years ago, no, thirty, maybe thirty-two, you could drive through, you could park to your heart's content and no one was there, there wasn't even a single restaurant. And as we moved this new direction, everyone complains about the parking, everyone complains of traffic, but people want to live here now, like they never did before, we saw a huge transformation. So I think you're on the right track. All right. If, if there's no concerns, I'm looking for a motion for approval. And looking, and looking. We got Deborah shy now. Okay, go ahead, Deborah.
Okay, I move that the planning board recommend approval for code revision case number twenty-three oh four as listed in the staff report dated October seventeen, twenty twenty-three. The motion is based upon a determination that the testimony presented at this hearing along with the application submitted and staff report constitute a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. The committee hereby makes findings of fact that the proposed code amendments satisfy all of the criteria and amendment standards found in the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations, Article Two, Section ninety-four dash thirty-two.
Second. Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that brings us to other business, unfinished business, new business.
Other business, staff just wanted to take a quick poll. November meeting is the week of Thanksgiving, November twenty-first. Just wanted to make sure that everybody's available, just doing it early so we don't have to write, do a whole lot of work that Tuesday, November twenty-first.
Yeah, are you making dinner?
Yeah. Sounds like we'll do it right here.
So everybody's, will we have a call?
I, I can't live the city, traffic and parking, so I'm stuck here.
Yeah, no, it'd be, because we got, the occasions that got continued tonight, we'll be back on the November meeting, so...
Okay.
Maybe a bit crowded for that.
We also need a new alternate too, so in case we lose someone.
Say it again?
We, aren't we one alternate shy now?
Yes.
So keep after them on that, so we'll have a little more cushion.
Yeah, he's working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned.